We'll call the May 8, 2023, regular meeting of Peterstownship Council Order. Mr. Lauer, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Shanifelt.
Here.
Dr. Prostke.
Here.
Mr. Curry.
Here.
Mr. Cozer.
Here.
Mr. Spiegel.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Ross.
Here.
Before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, we have a volunteer from the audience this evening to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Come up here, young man, and tell us your name.
Jameson.
What's your last name?
Krebs.
You know, you look exactly like your daddy. You know, I know this. Your daddy and I grew up together. We lived on the same street. So you tell your daddy that Frank says hi. And I went to high school with your mommy, too. And your mommy can tell you stories about me. Let us stand for pleasure. Lead. Ready? Go ahead.
Listen.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the council meeting of April 24th. Motion and second, a discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Special reports. Environmental Quality Board, efforts to establish a grove of chestnut trees in Rolling Hills
Hello, I'm Blaze Hollitt, 223 Trinity Drive, just a member of the EQB. And thank you for letting me address you tonight because was wanting to mention that as the Rolling Hills master park master plan was being developed, Mr. Lauer asked that the EQB investigate a planting of trees that were once familiar, now threatened. You can think of American elm, American chestnut, and now white ash. This evening, I report that 40 pure American chestnut tree seedlings will be planted in what will be called, this is a big one, Rolling Hills American Chestnut Germplasm Conservation Orchard, or GCO for short. Why American chestnut? When the Appalachians, especially here in Pennsylvania, this tree dominated the forest. One out of every four hardwood trees was a chestnut. The tree was highly valued. Its fruit provided food for man, livestock and game. Its bark provided tannin for the curing of leather. Its wood was strong, light and rot resistant, used for housing, furniture, cabinets, fences. It grows a giant, over 100 feet tall and 10 feet in diameter. Accidentally, in the early 1900s, an Asian fungus called chestnut blight was introduced, which quickly killed adult trees, eliminating them from the forest landscape. Unique to chestnuts, roots from these old trees still send saplings up, but the trees usually wither and die before they can reach maturity. EQB contacted and is partnering with the Pennsylvania-New Jersey Chapter of the American Chestnut Foundation to be part of the story to bring this tree back from the dead. Researchers in Syracuse, New York, developed a tree called Darling 58, a blight-resistant chestnut that is currently under review by EPA and USDA. Per the foundation and researcher planning, Darling 58 tree pollen will be used to pollinate pure American chestnut tree flowers, resulting in nuts that should produce trees that share this blight resistance. Our proposed GCO will essentially be a nursery, sort of like a brood stock, if you will, of trees that will produce flowers to be pollinated by the Darling 58 trees. EQB also coordinated and brought together administration, Parks and Rec, Public Works, to dedicate a roughly 100-foot rectangular plot of land in the park near the upper reaches of the connecting trail between Arrowhead Trail and the park. Enabled by the hard work and coordination of Mr. Jay Mizza and with all the Public Works guys, they laid out the planting grid, applied herbicide, and constructed a seven-foot-high deer exposure fence to provide sanctuary for these seedlings. On Saturday, June 3, 40 seedlings from Penn State will be planted by EQB members, by Peterstownship High School students from the Safe and Horticultural Club, and community volunteers. Publicity for this event will be made via EQB website, our Facebook page, and other outlets. Signage, of which we have back here, will be attached to the deer exposure fence to educate people, as well as another sign that's going to be customized. And it's going to be customized with pictures that you see here of the deer exposure fence, as well as with pictures that we'll be taking during the planting process. So this will be a very educational effort, and people, when they see this, will be able to learn more about this initiative. So signage, we also plan to be placed on Arrowhead Trail so people can see, be interested about it, and then come up into the park. So hopefully, these seedlings will survive the shock of the planting and thrive, flowering in five to, in seven to 10 years. The flowers will be fertilized with Darling 58 pollen, producing nuts for additional orchard plantings. And then sadly, I have to say that these trees will eventually catch the blight and die probably within 20 years. So thank you for the opportunity to inform you of this initiative. We won't be here, we probably won't be here to witness the success of this, but probably our children, our children's children will be able to see the American chestnut come back and be a viable tree in the eastern forests.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
I have a question.
Yeah.
What about other critters, like rabbits? They can get in there. Would they eat that? Or how are you going to address that?
Yep. The bottom half, or I should say maybe the bottom foot of the deer exposure fence is much, is a smaller mesh.
Okay. Because, oh, I saw in that picture with those big ones, and I figured that isn't...
Yep. Also, what we're planning on doing is we're going to get some plastic tree tubes, and the seedlings themselves, we're actually going to stake them and be behind the tubes. And the tubes will keep the little critters there, bulls, chipmunks or whatever, to take them down.
I think it's a really good idea.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Maybe you could find some other kind of endangered stuff, too. We could start doing that.
Today, you're some...
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you. All right, next is...
Well, you know, before we go on, the Environmental Quality Board and with the help of Ryan has been involved in another project that I thought kind of dovetails in with what you have here.
Today, we are celebrating Earth Day and what is Cleanup Day for the township. And one of the ways that we decided to celebrate was with the Girl Scouts. And so we are here at the municipal complex and the library planting trees for the township.
As Girl Scouts, we strive to make the world a better place. And what better way to do that than beautify our community here at Peter's Library? And so with the help of the Environmental Quality Board, we're planting trees here today.
I think a lot of people associate us with selling Girl Scout cookies, but we're more than just selling Girl Scout cookies. We're here to help our girls grow up to be independent women in society. One of the traditions of Girl Scouts is World Thinking Day. And what it is, is it reflects on what it means to be a Girl Scout and what impact we have in society.
And this year's theme was our world, our environment, peace and security. And our job there at Thinking Day is to think of different ways that we can help our environment. And one of the ideas that our girls came up with was to plant trees here today.
We first started the day with cleaning up our current environment, and then thinking about our future. Educate us on the why of why we're planting these trees, why we're cleaning up, why it's so important to take care of our environment.
These are Acer sicaricum, which are sugar maples. It's a legacy sugar maple, which is a native tree to Pennsylvania. It's a native tree to the northeast of the United States. It's a tree that can acclimate to our climate. It grows very, very quickly once acclimated.
Trees provide oxygen and a natural place for birds and any animal to come make a home.
They are going to be wonderful for our environment. They're shade trees. They're also wonderful trees for pollinators. Planting any tree can make a great difference in your community. It will also help with the environment. It'll make us a prettier township, and then it will also help to combat climate change.
Are they maples, sugar maples?
Yes. Like 20 years from now, we can have, tap the sap and make sure...
Tap it, yeah, we sap.
Can I ask this gentleman a question? South Park did this, correct? What do you feel your program does that carries on what they did, or any differences? South Park recently, or... Geez, this probably been at least 15 years. And they had a growth. I thought they did a hybrid with the Asian, to be more resistant. Yeah. They had that, since the 1950s, there's been a lot of work in trying to backcross with the Chinese chestnut and also with the European chestnut, too. But it just really hasn't proved to be blight resistant, and the trees that are being produced still don't have the strength of the wood that the American chestnut did. So that's been kind of abandoned in favor of this Darling 58 approach. Thank you.
Okay, next item, solid waste collection and disposal contract, Mr. Lauer.
South Hills Area Council Government had a pre-bid meeting today with regard to the upcoming solid waste services contract. This contract is actually let on behalf of 20 municipalities in the South Hills. And the thing that I just want to bring back to council again is what we're being told is there are going to be a substantial increase in cost. And that increase could be anywhere from 20 to 40% over the current cost. So right now, people are paying $70 a quarter. It may well be that garbage collection next year could be as much as $100 a quarter. The other thing is that we do automated collection here, but everybody's going to be pushed in that direction who isn't there right now. And there's going to be a limitation of one container. You can have additional containers, but you're going to end up doing that under a separate contract with the waste hauler, if in fact you would like to have a second container. And that's true for either garbage or recycling. When we start the new contract, glass is going to be back in the recycling stream. And one of the things that we're going to be talking about probably at the time when we're doing the budget, our recycling carts are now 10 years old, which means they're no longer under warranty. And so as you can imagine, on those carts, what fails is the lids, the axles, and the wheels. And because they're not under warranty anymore, unless we replace those carts, every time there's a repair done, we're going to be doing that on a time and material basis from the hauler. So we've made some accommodations inside of the bid document at Peterstownship's past is to provide us some coverage for some of the carts. But at some point in time in this, either next year or shortly thereafter, it's going to probably make sense to replace those recycling carts. Or I think we're going to run into a situation where we're spending quite a bit to maintain them, so.
Paul, you any idea how much it costs to replace all of those? How much did we pay for them originally? Or they gave them to us?
Well, the recycling carts cost about $50 apiece. There's 8,000 of them out, over 8,000 of them out there. The thing is, with the recycling carts, there's a good chance that the state of Pennsylvania will pick up 90% of the cost. So, you know, from the township standpoint, we would be putting out $50,000, but what you would have out there are carts that will be new and maintained for the next 10 years. I think the question is, those carts would end up being recycled by the manufacturer. I don't know how people are going to react to that, because a lot of those carts look in good shape, particularly the bodies of those carts. So we need to figure that one out.
So can you explain to me what residents are going to have to do exactly if they have more than one container?
The only pick up one container. If you want to have more than one container on a regular basis, there will be an annual fee that will be paid directly by the resident to the hauler. The hauler will then provide another container and collect that for the year.
So, but they would expect that if there's extra, you know, if your house has extra waste, that you hold it back and dispose of it on your own?
They would expect that you would hold it back, and when you could get it into that cart, you would. The one thing I noticed driving around is that the, because when we bought those big containers, we had a lot of people push back about the size of those. What I notice about those big containers, for the most part, is that people can get their garbage inside that container.
Yeah. Except for, yeah.
Except when you have that party or, you know, Christmas, Christmas.
Paul, years ago, when we looked at the last contract, I remember there was some kind of provision where there was discussion about being able to purchase tags for, you know, additional, you know, one-time, one-off kind of disposal events where you can, you pay for the tags, use one of your tags. Is that possible?
That's, that's not going to be possible under the contract, because the way the haulers are going to, have told us they're going to handle this is this idea of having...
They're pretty adamant about doing that.
Yeah. Oh, they're very adamant, and they're very adamant about pushing everybody who hasn't gone to the carts, to the carts. So for those people who still have traditional collection, this 20 to 40% increase is nothing in comparison to what they're going to see.
Will there still be a senior citizen discount?
That's up to council, but yes, that would be my recommendation.
And this is going to be a bid, or is...
It's a bid.
Waste Management.
There are, right now, three haulers interested in this contract. The problem with this contract is its sheer size. This is the largest single bid solid waste contract in Pennsylvania, you know, in terms of tonnage. So there's, there's a limited number of people who can actually bid on this. So you're going to get Waste Management, Republic, and there's a smaller firm, Noble, that are going to probably bid on them.
Noble used to be...
Vogel.
Piccarelli or one of those, I think, way back in the day.
No, Piccarelli, I think, was actually bought by Waste Management a long time ago.
Yeah, but I think he started a new company after his law compete earned on. What about bidding ourselves individually?
Well, once you, once we begin this process, we're committed to the shakeout contract, but it, and I was talking to Ryan about this today, given what we're seeing, when this comes around the next time, I think we seriously have to sit back and make a determination whether we're better off doing this on our own or bidding jointly.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, it depends on what the number is, but I mean, it might be cheaper to, you might get one of these other companies, because we're, you know, we're going to end up with Waste Management.
Well, you can end up with Waste Management or Republic. There's no question about that.
Right. That's what I'm saying. So it might not, I mean, I understand if we do this, we were committed to it, but like, you might get a better deal for somebody that can handle like our volume, and, you know, it might not be criminal crime service, but it'd be, however, a lot cheaper than what these guys want us charging.
You know what? If you, and we've been watching this, Ryan and I, when you look at all these contracts that have been bid, whether there's the North Hills Cog or individual municipalities, you're seeing these kind of increases everywhere. Their labor cost, their, their cost of...
Fuel.
Fuel. Their, their cost of equipment, you're seeing this no matter where you go.
And how, how long will this contract be?
It'll be five years, just like it was before.
So gasoline goes back to normal, we're still going to pay the higher rate? Or is there going to be some sort of a provision in there?
There's a provision, there's a provision in the, in the contract with regard to fuel escalation, de-escalation.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, we'll move on to audience comments. This is the part of the meeting where anyone can speak for up to five minutes on a non-agenda item. Is there anyone who wishes to speak?
I'd like to speak.
Unfortunately, sir, please. We have a sign up sheet up there?
Yes. Your name and address.
Name and address, sir.
Yeah, my name's John Powell, and I live at 269 Thompsonville Road. I'm right, I'm right in front of the Juniper Way plan. They had built a retention pond behind my house, and right now, that pond is leaking down my side driveway. Every time it rains, I got water gushing down the side. I had Mark come out, take a look, and we, you know, he looked at it and said, okay, we can do this. And I think we're finally getting somewhere where they're going to do something for me. He talked to Woody. He's going to have a meeting with him this week. I just want to let you guys know I'm having a problem. Okay? And the other thing I had was, there was, used to be a, the house used to be on the backside, it was the Sne House, and there was a sewer drain that runs down, it goes across my property. And, you know, I, you know, I have the paper for it. And I had Woody, Woody had dug it up, and they plugged it off. Okay? But it turned into like a French drain. So all that water now coming through that pipe, there's a, there's a cap there, and you can see the water when it rains and stuff comes out, and I get a big, big puddle on the side. So I just, like, I was just talking to Mark. Mark said, yeah, he's going to have a meeting with us this week. They gave me a plan. We're going to kind of look at it, once he talks to him, and then I can talk to Woody, maybe we can get this all handled.
Okay.
Okay?
You've been waiting how long?
This, well, I had other issues where they put big trucks on my driveway and broke it up, and I'll talk to Woody about it. But it's been, they started this back in 18. And so things, they got bad for a while, but a lot of them cured up. I had Ed Zook come. Ed Zook says, give it some time, and it did. A lot of the things did get better. But now this thing just popped up out of the, out of the woodwork. It just, they were up there digging around, re-fishing it up, and the next thing I know, I got this three-inch pipe just pumping water down my driveway. So, and they kind of, and he, Mark knows about it.
Thank you. I don't know if you want me to elaborate, but I will.
What's that? If you would, that'd be great.
You can elaborate when they tell you they're not doing anything else.
Yeah.
No, I can confirm what, I can confirm what Mr. Powell is saying. I mean, we do have a meeting with, with the developer on Thursday to tie up a bunch of loose ends in the Juniper Plan. He's working towards closing out the plan, and there's a number of things we want to talk about. Mr. Powell's drainage issue is definitely one of them. The pipe that he's referring to, it is a, you engineers on council may know this, it's a, like a Kiway drain. It's an, you know, the, the, an earthwork was created to create the berm for the pond, so it's, it's a drain in the Kiway of the, of the earthwork there. And so it's perforated pipe, it's bedded in gravel, and for some reason, it's catching a lot of groundwater. The developer's been up there in the last couple of weeks converting the ponds into their final format for, for state regs, and so there's no vegetation in them right now. I suspect when that vegetation grows up and soaks up some of that water, it'll improve. But in the meantime, it's, it's definitely an issue that needs to be addressed. Developer's aware of it. We've written them letters, so we're trying to get a timetable from them here. And he's stated that once he's done with the ponds, once he's done with some other issues on site, that was the next thing on his list. So we, we have a meeting with him Thursday, and we're going to try to get a nail down to a timetable, and we, he has a solution in mind that I think will work to cure this pipe issue, so stay tuned.
Things like this, whenever they happen, do you, before it gets turned over to the township, do you make sure, like, you know, you have to have this done before that happens?
Yeah, I mean, this, this situation's kind of unique in that, you know, the developer's not in violation of his plan or anything. I mean, everyone, everything was done per plan. There's just, you know, it happens sometimes, something doesn't work right, or something's, there's some anomaly that wasn't thought of. This thing with, with the, the Kiway drain in the pond, it, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Powell, but I don't think this particular pipe was an issue up until just a couple of months ago, when Woody started to work on the ponds. And it seems like, once he's changed the flow of the water inside the pond, like, the water used to kind of flow, when it was acting as a sediment facility, it would kind of flow straight through to the pond, to the outlet structure, and didn't really have the chance to soak in. But these ponds are designed to infiltrate water per state reg, so I think what's happening is that it's actually working right. You know, the, the ponds infiltrating water, and it's, it's, that groundwater is making its way to the Kiway drain, and it's making a tremendous amount of water. It looks like a fire hose coming out at the upper part of his driveway, so it's, definitely needs addressed.
But to answer your question more generally, before a plan's taken over, there is an inspection done by gateway engineers, whoever the consulting engineers on, on charge of the project, as well as Mr. Zomitis, and it's only based upon when those things are complete that the township takes over responsibility for the public improvements inside. And that's what that meeting is in part, is to go through those things that are outstanding that are needed to be able to take over the plan.
Good question. Thank you.
Just to be clear, though, I, I, an issue like this, I'm not sure it would have been caught.
No, no. I understand.
But Paul is correct. Like, there's a, there's a process at the end of the development where we make sure everything's in order before we take it over.
And I know you've been in contact with Mr. Powell, so after your meeting with Woody, you'll follow up and...
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else from the audience wish to speak? You had me worried there for a second, Ms. Shanif.
I know. I'm tired after cutting my grass. Okay. First of all, I wanted to say I, I'm sorry I missed the last meeting, but you guys were on speed dial or something, because you were in executive session by the time I got here. I was held up at a meeting, another meeting. I wanted to thank you for the stop sign, okay? I went over and observed it, and people did come up. They saw me out there, so they came out and, they were all hugging me and everything. But then, so I stood there for a while, and I saw that some people weren't obeying the stop sign. So I'm going, I'm telling you, because I don't want to get arrested or anything for this. I'm going to go over there, and I'm going to sit in a chair. They said they'll provide me one. And I'm just going to give thumbs up, you know, and smile at people when they stop at that stop sign, because I think they need reinforcement.
What finger are you going to give them if they don't stop?
Well, I was giving them a thumbs down, okay? While I was standing there, because I think I stood there for about 20 minutes, and, you know, they were like, like, what? And then I'm going, mm, stop sign, you know? So anyway, I'm going to do that. But I have to say, now, I don't want to say that I've created a monster, okay? But I think I'm experiencing something that council sometimes experiences when people come and complain to you, all right? Now they want a speed bump. But I don't know, is that too little of a road to put a speed bump?
We don't do speed bumps anymore.
Well, it wouldn't qualify for...
Well, speed bump, bump, bump.
It wouldn't qualify anyway.
What do you mean? Not speed bump, bump, bump. What do you call it? I mean, I have, they just put one in front of my house, so what?
But that was there, that was there before.
Oh.
That would have replaced the old place.
Okay. So you're not doing those at all anymore, ever, anywhere?
I guess if we had, we would, but I can tell you, but being on that committee, that street's never going to qualify. It has to be outside of the, like, way outside of the normal speed.
Okay.
And it's coming up that hill, you're never going to go that fast.
Yeah, and I can see what they're talking about. The one woman who was complaining about it is, she has children, and of course, in those apartments, you know, the kids don't have anywhere to play. There, there aren't any playgrounds nearby or anything. So it's, she says, my kids almost got killed. She said, my sister and I were hit by a car when we were young, you know? We were outside playing. So I'll tell them, they can't get a speed bump, but we got to try to make these people abide by the...
Do we solve a speed trailer? And we could park up there for a couple of weeks?
We would have the ability to put a sign up there temporarily. I don't know if it's a speed trailer or, or one of the other signs on a temporary basis.
Okay. Yeah, it's just that, you know, from the one stop sign to the other, they're like, whizzing by, I don't know why.
Trying to make up for lost time.
Is that it? Okay. All right. So then the other monster I created was the people up on top of the hill, okay? As you go up to Cross Winds and Crossbow there, they are saying, we need a stop sign up there. So I don't know. I'm just reporting it that this is, because I know when I go door knocking, these people are going to say, did you talk to council about the stop sign? We want here up on top of the hill, so...
I will say, that is, when you come up the top of that hill there...
Because nobody's stopping.
If you're going back down towards Aldi, you know, a couple of times, I've almost got hit, because people who are coming the other direction will make, you know, will cut across before cresting the hill.
Yeah.
You're right, because there's, there's that clubhouse there on the right side. And when you come up, you're coming up that hill, and not coming up, if you're coming up the other direction, people will come down out of that neighborhood.
Right.
And, you know, cut you off.
Well, what I'm going to do for that, okay, I'm going to go and sit up there, and I'm going to tally how many cars come by there, okay?
But we have machines that can do it.
Whatever. I don't see a machine up there, so put one up there then, because we need to figure this out.
We don't want you to lose door knocking time.
Okay, we don't, we have to figure this out, because these, I'm telling you, okay? The other thing is, surprisingly, I had someone complain to me, and I, and I'm just The other thing is, surprisingly, I had someone complain to me, and I, and I'm just throwing this out there because, tell me where this constituent of mine should go. She says that a neighbor's, it's a pipe coming, and water's coming down into her yard. So I don't know what this water is, but it is coming out of a pipe. I guess it's about this big. So.
You should have her call the municipal building.
Call the municipal building? Okay, I will do that. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Chaney.
All right.
Anybody else wanna speak?
Maureen Jones from East McMurray Road. And I'm just here tonight to voice a concern at the Motta Development that's taking place particularly along the Sugar Camp Road. You have four developments in different stages of, of ongoing, in less than a mile down there. And the one development where the Arabian Horse Farm is, is currently, you're having, what, about 200 homes going in there? And you have roads that were basically built for farming, that now can't control the amount of traffic that's going to be pushed on us. So that's why I just wanted to come up and voice a concern. I hope somebody's overseeing the amount of traffic, because it keeps getting increasingly worse in the township.
That's the state road, Mr. Lauer?
Yes.
That's a state road, man. But I understand your concern.
And we all share it.
Unfortunately, if people wanted the valid property and they meet all the criteria, there's not, there's very little that we can do.
What do you do about the state road, then?
You do what we'll be doing shortly, as you go to PennDOT, and express concerns about intersections, roadways. You know, the fact of the matter is, right now with PennDOT, there is a funding shortage. And if you look at what PennDOT has programmed, for the most part, it's all bridge replacements. These two intersections we're having done are really an exception to what's occurring in District 12.
How many of the roads in Peters, not, not how many of them, but how many state roads do we have going through Peters? Well, you have 19.
Valley Brook, Sugar Camp, Venetia Park, or Venetia.
Probably about 10-ish.
But it's all the major roads.
McMurray.
Yeah, all the major.
So our hands are kinda tied?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
30 miles of state road.
Yeah.
You were at the behest of PennDOT, exactly.
What's the mercy of PennDOT?
30 miles of state road?
Yes.
That's about right.
Yes, 29.1.
How many miles of the entire township?
170, what?
What, township, rather? About 117.
Yeah, well, it's a good chunk.
It's a good chunk, yeah. Yeah, so that, that's in addition. So the total mileage is like 140.
Yeah.
25 percent. All right, anybody else in the audience wish to speak? Seeing no one, we'll move on to unfinished business. Resolution amending Peters Township Park and Recreation Department policy regarding youth sports association outdoor athletic fence signs.
So on March 27th, the council by a simple motion indicated a desire to amend the policy concerning signs on youth athletic field. But because the policy was adopted by resolution, it must be amended by resolution. The resolution under consideration night eliminates the fees to pay to the township for all signs on youth athletic fences. And it's my recommendation that council adopt Resolution 50123.
So moved.
Second. Motion in the second, any discussion?
I have a question, 'cause I, I wasn't here at the last meeting, and I'm assuming that you talked about this. But do we still retain control over what's on the sign?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. 7-0, Mr. Lauer. On to new business. Resolution amending Peters Township Park and Recreation Department policy regarding alcohol permits.
So the township allows consumption of wine and beer designated picnic shelters in Peterswood Park. The proposed change would be to allow for alcohol to be available for use at the shelters in, in Rolling Hills Park. The recommendation of the Park and Rec Board was to make those permits available to each of the shelters. The one thing that I would point out to you is that in Peterswood Park, they purposely counsel reserved Shelter Number Four, where there would not be alcohol, so that you could be confident, if you were having a party, where it would be inappropriate, that you could have it there and, and, and not deal with, with alcohol consumption. The thing that I wonder about, and this is strictly up the council, is whether or not it makes sense in Rolling Hills Park to reserve one of the shelters so that, in fact, it, it was alcohol-free.
Shelter C.
And if you were gonna do it, I think it's Shelter C near the playground.
I don't think you'd want, you know, even if, there, you do not wanna have alcohol that close to the playground. 'Cause you're only about, what, 100 feet away?
Yes.
Maybe 150.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it's very close.
The restaurant with the racetrack.
So if you were to do that, what you would, would do is to make a motion to adopt Resolution 52, amending it and eliminating Shelter C.
So Paul, I have a question. When you reserve, get a permit for the shelter, is that alcohol permit inclusive of that?
No, it's an additional, 'cause there are only people who will reserve a shelter, and it will be, they will not intend to have alcohol at their picnic. You get a separate permit for that.
You pay more, too, right?
Yes, you pay more. And quite honestly, the cleanup is, is greater. So.
What, what vehicle is it that we permit wine and beer in the amphitheater during the concerts?
It's, it's also a, a provision that's done by policy council. It is not for all events. It is for the events that are deemed by the Park and Rec Board to be appropriate for that. So like, for instance, there are children's movies that are shown in the, at the amphitheater. There's never alcohol in, at those, at those events. But there are, for the vast majority of the concerts, it is permitted.
Do you know whether or not we've ever had any kind of incident involving alcohol, where, you know, say the police had to show up because people were getting too inebriated?
You know, I haven't, I do not have any personal knowledge of, of this, this change in this policy ever been a problem.
Listen, I, I, when we did this policy originally, I was opposed to it, and I'm still opposed to it. I don't think we should have alcohol in, in a park with children and whatever around. I just don't.
Well, you just beat me to it, 'cause I was gonna make the same speech.
I think Mr. Lewis and I already know, but it's the first time. And I, I don't think that, I, I just don't think there's a, no place, there's any place for that.
But. We're a minority.
But that's okay.
Does anyone wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. Which one is it? 050203, amending Peters Township Parks and Recreation Department policy regarding alcohol permits, but reserving Shelter C as a non-alcohol shelter. Does that work?
Second. Motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
I have a question, sorry. It does have to do with this. But whenever, like, all of the shelters are being used, does someone go around and monitor it, or check in on anything?
The, you have Public Works employees who work in the parks over, over the weekends. So they're cleaning restrooms, they're cleaning shelters. But there's not, if, if you're asking, is there somebody like a, a, which you would see in a county park, a park ranger who's there? The answer's no.
5 to 2, Mr. Lauer. Next item authorization for the city mission to host a fundraising event for the benefit of the Crabtree Covasic Veterans House and Peterswood Park Shelter Number Four and the Long Arrowhead Trail.
Have we done this before?
Yes, we, we did it last year. It wasn't a problem. It's a, it's a very worthy cause. It's, the city mission does, you know, a wonderful job helping veterans who are, have some challenges.
I'm gonna make a motion that we authorize the city mission to, to host a fundraising event on August 5th, 2023, for the benefit of the Crabtree Covasic, so he said, Veterans House and Peterswood Park at Shelter Four and the Long Arrowhead Trail.
Second.
Motion in the second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. 7-0, Mr. Lauer. Next item, award of a contract for the 2023 Stormwater Detention Pond Rehabilitation Project.
So the 2023 Peters Township budget includes an appropriation of $40,000 for the rehabilitation of stormwater detention ponds. Bids for the den, detention pond rehabilitation project were open on April 14th. What you see in front of you is the tabulation of that. As you can see, the, the.
The spread.
Well, the spread. The other thing is, Sularz.
Check, is that correct?
Close. He's done this work for us for a number of years. He understands it. We know that, that, that number is a good number in terms of getting a project done. We bid two alternates. Those alternates are the stormwater ponds in the Woodlands. I think I have this in the right location. Mark, if I'm correct, if I'm wrong.
Ah, close. The, the one to the right needs to be down where the Google symbol is.
Okay. But, but we have a stormwater policy where we're trying to get back control of the maintenance of these storm facilities. Regardless of who owns them right now, the township's responsible to make sure that they're working properly. And so what we, what council did was adopt a policy that says, if a homeowners association would, would restore them back to the condition they were at the time when they were turned over originally, the township would take control of those. The, the Woodlands HOA has indicated an interest in doing that. In fact, we're in receipt of a check already to cover their share of this project. So it's gonna be my recommendation that we award a bid including the alternates in the amount of $22,205.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. 7-0, Mr. Lauer. Next item, award of a contract for the 2023 Pavement Rejuvenator Program.
Yeah, and guess what? The, the tabulation, oh, that's right, there is in the tabulation. This is our rejuvenator project that we do every year. There is only one contractor who bids this. And the, the amount that was budgeted for this was, is part of the paving project. We've already awarded a contract over $2 million, and there's a balance of $147,000 left to cover this expense. This amount came in at $160,425. So it exceeds the appropriation by about $13,000. The fact of the matter is that the liquid fuels money that we've received in is $15,500 more than what we budgeted for. In addition to that, the amount that was budgeted did not include a contribution that we were gonna get from the water company. I have in here that it's $50,000. It's actually turned out to be $39,000. So there's more than enough money to undertake this project. This, one of the reasons this number is as large as it is, is that it's actually capturing roads that weren't done in the prior year. We think that this, this program is important to extend the life of, of the roadway system. And for that reason, it's gonna be my recommendation that the council award a contract of $160,425 to Pavement Technology Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. 7-0, Mr. Lauer. Next item, award of a contract for the purchase of police portable radios through the CoStar's Cooperative Purchasing Program.
So this is another contract that's being let with the money that was in the Equitable Sharing Program Fund. And this, this is the fund that accounts for revenues received by Peters Township as a result of the police department's participation in the U.S. Food and Drug Administration Task Force. The Equitable Sharing Fund includes an appropriation of $916,000 for capital equipment. Currently, we've committed $212,463. What this purchase represents is the acquisition of 18 portable radios. Five of these are gonna be dedicated to providing this communication with neighboring police departments to the north. Right now, when we respond to incidents in Upper St. Clair and Bethel Park, we don't have an easy way to be able to communicate with them. This will resolve that problem. The remaining 13 radios will be taken into the inventory of the township and used to replace some existing radios and, and to create a couple of spares. The purchase is being completed through a CoStar's contract that Motorola Solutions has. The total price of the, the radios is $59,840. So it's my recommendation that we award that purchase.
So moved. Second. Motion in the second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. 7-0, Mr. Lauer. Next item, approval for recording purposes of the Camden Village condominium, Plan Number One, as shown in drawings prepared by Keystone Surveying and Mapping, Inc., dated March 16, 2023, for Benjamin Marcus Homes, LLC.
Benjamin Marcus Homes owns about two-acre parcel at 1500 Quail Run Road. And that's what this drawing on, on the screen shows. It's at the intersection of Quail Run Road and, and Sugar Camp Road.
And that was the old sewer treatment.
That was the old sewer treatment, right?
Right?
I used to live right there, on Sanford.
Benjamin Marcus Home is seeking approval for a 13-unit townhouse development. The development will be situated along a private driveway that terminates in a cul-de-sac with ingress and egress to Quail Run Road. These units will utilize Quail Run Road addresses with a cluster mailbox located near the entrance of the proposed development. Due to the topography of the property, the four units facing Quail Run Road will, facing, will have entrances off of Quail Run Road with rear garages. Remaining units will be standard front-entry style units with front doors, sidewalk access, and garages in the front. At the April 13th meeting, the Planning Commission provided a recommendation to Peters Township Council that they, Camden Village preliminary final plan be approved, subject to the following conditions. And there are 15 conditions there. And it's gonna be my recommendation that council approve this, subject to the conditions as shown, as included in the Planning Commission recommendation.
So moved. This is gonna be a private road, right?
Yes. And, and not only will it be a private road, but the plan is gonna be marked that it can never be a public road.
That was gonna be my next question. And I think we should add a condition here that all deeds of sale will specifically state that these units are not serviced by a public road. So that five years from now, we don't have the same issue that we had down the street here with the, with the residents coming in and asking the township to take the road over.
Yes.
Because, you know, we've seen that a couple of times in this township now, where developers have sold on private lanes, and the residents either don't realize that, or don't think about it when they're buying, and then they're here two or three years later.
Wonder where the snow plowed.
To take the road, or asking us exactly to plow the snow.
And this is like Maller Lane in that it would be difficult to make this a public road, based upon what, the way things are configured.
Do we have any indication as to what price range these?
You know, when this project started, they were somewhere beginning in the 400s. That could be higher these days.
And so is, who's gonna own the common area, then? Is there HOA?
HOA.
It's not a condominium.
It is a condominium plant.
Oh, so those will be the limiting elements.
You're buying, you're buying your exterior of the walls, and that's it. HOA's gonna own the driveway, open space, and the stormwater management facility.
Right, okay.
So what happened to the water treatment plant that was there?
It's gone.
Like, what?
It's connected, if you, if you look back at this drawing.
Yeah.
They're tapped in.
See those green, see those green lines there?
I think it has been, but.
Those are all public sewers.
Yep.
Okay.
And those are gonna be partially relocated as part of this project, but.
And then is there a certain amount of time they had to wait before this could be sold?
No, it, it sat out there for years and years, and then changed hands a couple times. Someone bought it from Sheriff's sale in 2018.
It was a huge mortgage on it. And I, I did that. I hit it with a blade. It's all gone.
Very, very strange situation. But someone got it at Sheriff's sale and sold it to Benjamin Marcus Homes, and they did pretty good on that little transaction.
All right, well, I'll make a motion that we approve for recording purposes of the Camden Village condominium plan.
Tom already made him.
Yeah, Dr. Brosk. You're right, you're right. I'll amend Tom's motion, then, to include a provision that all deeds of sale specifically state that the units will not be serviced by a public road, are not serviced and never will be serviced by a public road. So we have a motion in the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
I recuse myself.
6-0-1, Mr. Lauer. Next item, discussion concerning proposed amendment to.
Practice.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just one question. I, reading through this, I, it says Plan Number One. Is there more going to be going in, or is it just these 13 units?
It's only the 13 units. That's the entire parcel.
Just the 13.
Okay. Cause I kinda had a moment of panic when I saw it. Is there more coming?
There's no, there's no other lane than the one we can see there.
Thank you.
I have a question.
If we're gonna have good questions, we need to come forward, because we have to be able to pick it up on the microphone.
Oh.
State your name and address.
Diane B. Chakris, drew a draw. Well, I, it's my understanding when you bought a home in Peters, there was a certain amount that the, of land you had to have each lot. And then when they started adding things like this, they would have green areas that would make up for the land that.
Well, what you have there, these are townhouses, just like you have in Quail Run. And all that, what's shown there in that kind of green, that is all land that's undeveloped, its own jointly by.
So that makes up for. So that makes up for what, like, what is it, an acre per house? That's the green space.
Well, and to the conversation of lot size, this is an entirely separate zoning district. This is our medium density residential where you can do townhouses and condos. It's entirely different set of rules and regulations. You're welcome.
All right. Next item, discussion concerning proposed amendment to the Peters Creek Sanitary Authority Article of Incorporation pertaining to membership.
Did we actually vote on that? I think we did.
Six nothing.
Thank you.
Okay.
So in 2021, the Peters Creek Sanitary Authority went to all its member municipalities and asked them to support a change in their bylaws. And what provoked that was they had a member of their, of the authority who was a supervisor in, in one of the member communities who was being disruptive. And the, the thought was that that individual member, I guess it was two things. One, that that individual member was not looking at the authority as the, the entity he was serving, but rather it was an extension of his role as a member of the Board of Supervisors in that municipality. And the other thing was that there was a thought that as a councilperson or an appointed official of a municipality, somehow that would be perceived as having, having greater standing than the remaining membership. So the sanitary authority did amend its bylaws to, and did so with the support of Peters Township and every other municipality to accommodate this change. It was challenged and what was determined in common police court was that you could not do this by changing your bylaws, but rather what it would take is a change in the Articles of Incorporation for the, for the authority. That means that each municipality, along with the authority, would have to take formal action to adopt this. So what Peters Creek is asking of its member municipalities is whether council still supports this idea, particularly since it impacts council as well as employees of the municipality in making this kind of change. One of the things, when this language originally came off, there was a concern expressed by someone on council that the language with regard to immediate family members was not defined. And what they've done is define it now in this fashion so that it mimics what's in the Public Officials and Employees Ethics Act in terms of defining what an immediate family member is.
An uncle, woman, cousin aren't necessarily.
No, no. So.
Cousins.
But didn't they also have an issue with that as well? Wasn't there a cousin, some wife or?
Yes. That's, and again, that's why you, that's why you get to this language. But again, it's up to council. The only thing that I point out to you is, and I pointed it out when we discussed this the last time, and I'm not suggesting that we should not support this, but when we had a problem over at the Peters Township Sanitary Authority, one of council's ways to solve that problem was to appoint Mike Celestry onto that board. And, and it had the desired effect, but.
But would that be possible though, being that, assuming?
The answer is yes, because you've actually had, you've actually had, council's appointed people to this sanitary authority who don't live in its service area.
Well, no, I'm saying because he was, wasn't he an employee of the township at the time?
Yes. Michael, yeah, he would, if you adopt this, he would not, you know, he or, or no employee of the township could be.
For those that weren't here, this was a very troubling, serious event. Going back a couple of years ago, I guess. And I would certainly encourage all of you to join our board and supporting this.
So you need just a motion to?
All I need is with the consensus, the council is going to relay that back to the authority. I think the authority is quite honestly kind of like doing this a little backwards. Their intention is to adopt a change to the Articles of Incorporation and get the municipalities to ratify it. I think it should be the other way around, but that's okay. They just want to make sure that if they're going ahead with this, when it comes back here, that it's going to be supported.
Everybody good with it? So you got seven from the head nods, Mr. Lauer.
That's good.
You want to know more about it?
All right. Next item, resolution establishing the council member internship program. Since this was sort of my baby, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number 05-03-23 establishing the council member internship program.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
It's a great idea.
You can stop clocks or write twice a day, right? Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Payroll and bills, Dr. Porosco.
I have reviewed payrolls and bills found to be in good standing order. Would like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Correspondence, there is none, correct?
That's right.
Okay. You might want to discuss any of the various minutes of the boards or commissions? Nope. Miscellaneous township tour.
At the beginning of the year, council indicated that they would like to schedule that tour for June 27th. I just wanted to make sure that date is still the date we want to do this on.
Still good for me.
And if you have things that you would like us to include in that, if you could let me know, drop me an email. That would be great. The other thing that came up, and I don't know whether we want to do this on this same day or not, PennDOT would like to have a meeting here with public officials as well as a meeting with the public in general to talk about the intersection project.
I may not be here.
At Deebout and East McMurray Road. So are we interested in doing that at the beginning of that township tour? Probably take a half hour. The other thing is if you want, you know, we can meet with them and relay back what that project's involving, so.
What was the date, Jesus? June 27th?
June 27th.
I mean, or if they want to meet at the council, before the council meeting the day before, that could work as well.
Yeah, because if we do that, then we.
Well, but they want to have, well, you know what, maybe we could.
I think it has to be a separate day if you're going to get the public involved.
Well, I was going to say, we can meet, they can meet with council and we can find another room where they can meet with the public. We can do that.
What was the road tour day?
The 27th.
27.
Tuesday.
Yep. So 27th still work for everyone?
I'm not sure yet.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay, next thing, a volunteer recognition reception proposed dates, week of September 18th.
Yeah, our thought was when we did this before, when we tried to do it when schools out and vacations are on, it impacted getting people out. So my suggestion was to do it after Labor Day.
Okey doke.
What is it?
It's a, a recognition, it's going to be like a reception over at Belvoir Country Club for members of various boards.
19, 20, or 21 all work for me then.
And that's now in September?
Yes.
Not that far out ahead.
Just as a matter of information, I wanted to bring this to council because this plan will not come to council for approval. It's, it's a use by right. The approval process is such that it's, it is done by the planning commission. They're going to be considering this.
June 8th meeting.
The June 8th meeting. So what this is, is the apartment complex over at Waterdam and Galley. Consists of five buildings. Each of them meet the limits for.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six units, so.
Per building.
Per building. 181 total units.
So walk-up?
Three-story walk-ups, combination of one bedroom, two bedrooms. They're not planning any three-bedroom units at this time.
Yeah. And what they were telling us is that it would probably be an equal split between one bedroom and two bedroom units. The other thing about this is, just so you know, and again, it's just a fact, you know, one of the things that, because of, this is lesser in terms of the number of units, they don't have a traffic impact at that intersection that causes them to have problems getting a highway occupancy permit from PennDOT. When we were looking at the other plan, they were talking about giving us an enhanced traffic impact fee. I think that's off the table now. Now, we'll, we'll get a traffic impact fee, but it'll be based upon the number of units there.
Any covered parking? Sorry, you don't?
No.
How many, I can't remember the prior.
Two hundred.
Two fifty.
Two fifty. Two eighty or something like that.
Two fifty to 180.
Any amenities?
They're proposing in the bottom right-hand corner, some type of sport court facility, combination of pickleball. They've shown, I think, six courts there. That's probably more than they need, but they're kind of mulling over their options there. They're still looking at doing a pool in that center area between the three buildings on the left. They're refining, refining the design and layout for that as well.
These are going to be, for several, they're going to be rental units?
Rental units.
All of them are going to be rental units.
And I just want to say this is why I voted to have it the other way because I think that this is probably worse. I mean, not looking necessarily, but I think we would have been better off the other way.
Now, is there only one entrance?
Two entrances. One on Waterdam, one on Galley.
One on Galley.
It's either one on Galley.
How much was the traffic impact fee on the other one?
Well, what they were willing to do, the traffic impact fee is set on a per unit basis, but what they were willing to do is make a contribution of $440,000. What we'll get is traffic impact fees given.
Well, with apartments, it's a little bit different because it's really based on your P and peak hour trips. And apartments don't generate as many trips on a per unit basis as a single-family home does. So it's not as much of a one-to-one ratio with our traffic impact. I think it's somewhere $115,000 range on traffic impact.
All right. Peterswood Park Ball Field Improvement Project.
Oh, I just wanted to bring this up to make sure that we're all on the same page. I know Mr. Rouse got a, a question about this, about what we had decided to do. And the fact of the matter is, we're not to the point of, of having decided. Ryan had an opportunity to meet with the people from the Park and Rec Department as well as baseball to begin discussion about this. We're talking about a couple of things. One, renovating the existing concession stand and the pitting shelter. And that's a project that we can do in-house. We're talking about replacing the lighting on both fields and moving them to LEDs. We have a, a architect under contract right now to design the press box and the dugouts. And then in addition to that, and this is probably going to come to you at the next meeting, we'd like to engage gateway engineers to design the, the synthetic turf on the larger field. They had previously done a design to put turf on the infield of the smaller field. At that time, the baseball association was going to fund the bulk of that project and they backed out from that. So since we have that design already, we would like, just like to augment it with, with looking at this other field. The problem is, we're not far enough in this process to know what all of this costs. And so until we get to that point, we can't move forward with the business plan that the state of Pennsylvania requires to be able to get access to the ARCAT money. So no decisions have been made, but that's kind of the scope of the project we're talking about.
Are the dugouts limited to the, the main field or also?
All, all for them. If anything on these fields is a problem right now, it's the dugouts and the press blocks. They're terrible.
They've been ugly for 20 years.
What about the batting cage up there?
It's up there with that white box.
Yeah, that was small for that.
Far range.
Well, we can take a look at it, but you know, that was put in by the baseball association. Again, the problem's going to be is what's the budget for this project? You know, and I think once we, we find out what these things are going to cost, we, if there's not enough money there, we need to be looking for a partner. And I think those partners are the baseball association as well as the school district. The school district uses that larger field.
I was going to ask about that. Sorry to cut you off.
Yeah.
Yeah. Where does the school district come in on the, I mean, the high school field? That mean PW1 is the high school field?
Yes.
So, or Cole Field maybe?
It's, they use it, we use it, but like, you know, but it's always been, and I think council has the same opinion historically, those fields are best when they're in use. And so they use that field at, at no cost to the, to the school district. The township does all the work that's on that field. It's a community asset. To me, that makes sense.
But with this type of a project?
That's when we need to talk to our partners about sharing, so.
You talked about the turf infield and the Peters Baseball Association not wanting to contribute. Were you talking about just the smaller field?
Oh, and the smaller field, when that price came in, I think we were all surprised at what it cost the turf, that infield.
So they're still interested in augmenting for the larger field?
Oh, I, I think their preference would be to have artificial turf on both fields. It's, the question is, who's going to pay for it? Is there enough money to do it? So, you know, the intention is that, that to make a decision on this probably is part of the budgeting process because these projects won't, won't happen until next year.
Wasn't there a grant five or six months ago?
That's, that's what we're talking about here. That's what this is for.
That's already in the chute. We, that money will be available.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
When deciding on what's being done, who is consulted? Do they, but, okay.
Well, we're talking to the baseball association. We're talking to Parks and Rec Department and the Parks and Rec Board.
Are you talking to like the high school coaches or, I'm curious? I don't know.
I'll be honest, we haven't talked to the, to the high school coach, but I, I think for the baseball association, where I think we're getting fairly clear direction, you know, one of the things they'd like to see up there, they're talking about joining Pony and they'd like to be able to bring Pony World Series games to this, to this location, so.
You know what I thought was interesting? I was there, I'm there a lot because my boys play in the high school team. But on Saturday, there was not one game being played on the smaller field. Like I was there for like six hours. I just thought that was interesting. Saturday?
If you put turf on it, there will be.
It was beautiful. I just thought it was interesting.
How much was the price for the turf on that little infield?
It's 225.
Yeah. Quarter million, but that, that was drainage improvements.
Yeah, but their share was like 160 or something like this. I recollect, it was going to be us and them working together on that. We were going to do all the drainage work.
That seems incredible.
Yeah.
They backed out?
Yes. They didn't have the money at the time.
So what are you asking for us to do?
I'm not asking to do anything. I just want to let everybody know where we are because there's been some miscommunication because there are people out there who think that there's decisions been made with regard to what we're doing on the fields and we're nowhere near that.
What did you propose having somebody give us a, a price on turf in the big field?
And that's what we're going, what, what we're going to do is come back next meeting with a recommendation to award a contract to Gateway to design it so that we can go out and get a price. And, and the idea is that each of these elements, like we have a price right now on the sports lighting, I don't know what that is off the top of my head. The idea is to put together the entire package and see how it matches up to the amount of available funds.
This, this won't be complete till?
Next year.
Do you think next year we agree?
Yes.
When would it?
Next year for the baseball season to start or next year?
After the baseball season's done because I think we'll tear the fields up and if we, if we did it in the spring, you wouldn't be able to use it.
Maybe using the year 2025.
Yeah. So you might see the concession stand done. You might see the sports lighting done. I think the field work itself needs to be done after their season's done.
All right. All right. Drew Drive update.
I just wanted to let council know, the fencing's done, the seating has been completed up there, the township went in and did the patching on the, where the asphalt had been disturbed, and so what remains is the cabling, what I've been told again is that they'll have an answer on that sometime this summer as to what they will or aren't willing to do.
Did they do anything with that pad area that they fenced in, in terms of like a wall or something?
I don't know how they, how they filled that in, I don't know.
I'm sure Mr. Brown knows.
No, I doubt that Melissa Cook and Scott Van Ryan committed that they would be, whatever they sent to council or to the administration, I'd be included, and I don't think that's happening. I want to reiterate, Tony Brown, one, two, three, Drew it. What is the communication process? I'm really lost on that because I met the landscaper the other day, and I kept getting told all during this time that, don't worry, the lawns will get taken care of on your side of the street, don't worry, everybody knows about it. Walked out, met the landscaper, what are you talking about? We don't have a clue about fixing the lawn. So what's the communication process?
When I look at the email that now has so many people on it, I thought you were on that list of all the people, what you're seeing is what I'm seeing.
Right, but I was told there were other conversations, Mr. Cozer, did you have a conversation then with Melissa Cook?
She sent that email about ten minutes after you and I talked.
Well, that was in response to the fact that they never did any work on our side of the street. So there's a serious disconnect on our communications. I know that Mr. Stiegel put forward something that we were going to look at as far as utility work, maybe move into a hub approach. How do we close this loop? How do we get told there's going to get work done, it's not done? And Mr. Mers and myself, Joe Dempel on his behalf walked out and talked to, I think it's the Daddy-o is doing the work, so are they employed by Verizon, Diamond, the township?
I would assume that they're employed by Diamond.
Okay, they knew nothing. They knew nothing other than, don't talk to me because I'm a jerk. But, and that was after Alfred in the bathroom, and my wife gave him a refreshment. So we got to find a process where there's communication and check-offs on all this utility work.
Are you saying, Mr. Brown, that the restoration has not occurred on, on your side?
No, it did.
Okay.
Mr., the Daddy-o construction said, we're going to take care of it, it's not in our work order, nobody told us to do the work, but between Mr. Dempel, Mr. Mers and myself, he said he'll go ahead and do it.
Okay, because that's what I thought, I thought it had been taken care of on the other side of the street.
So that, that gives me concern as to the entirety of the process, and the process in this township moving forward on any utility work. When you speak about a decision that's coming, are you just speaking in general their statement that they will look at remediation work and then get back to us? Have you heard any particulars?
I have not heard what their solution is.
I was told that in February, we have redrawn lines in the township over who represents who, is that correct? Like who my councilman is?
Correct.
Does that take place in November, or is that today?
No, that, well, it'll go into effect in November, so next week, you still vote wherever you voted up till now.
So right now, Dr. Prosko has a pleasure of speaking to me when I have an issue, is Dr. Prosko still my councilman, or do we have new councilman?
Until November.
Till November, well, thank you very much.
I think, I think we all sit up here supporting you.
Well, I know we have Matt Harg, I thought about a specific one, Frank, I guess you're going to be stepping up next, so.
I don't know.
I already, I already saw something on the website, you're Drew Drive, man.
Is it?
You are, yeah.
I didn't even know I was up there.
So my wife makes a hell of a red sauce. We better break bread one of these days. All right, thank you all.
Paul, I have a question, before, when they put that fence up around that equipment area, did we go out and inspect it? Because remember, we were discussing, when they poured that pad?
What's that was talking about?
Yeah, I mean, did we go out and, like, I mean, whether or not they built a wall, I mean, how, what is holding that fence in place?
The retaining wall's coming on that.
Yeah, they're going to fix it.
It's already slapped.
It's starting to go.
Because I know when I drove by, it looks like all they did is they just put the fence posts on the edge of the slab, and the slab was actually hanging over there when they did that project, so.
And we never sampled that and tested the integrity of the slabs, do we? I think that all along?
We don't do that ever.
Ever?
We don't do that ever.
On a support, on a support structure?
Not, not for offense. No.
You already know my name, Gil Mers, I live in the one.
Did you write your name?
I'm going to do that. I do know how to write. But anyway, if there is any other activity up there with that tower, could, is there a way that you folks could inform whoever's doing the work, the contractor, to whomever, not to park their trucks in front of my driveway? You know, the street is blocked off. When they, when they're up there working, my wife winds up driving across the lawn to get out. Is there a way that you can tell those people they can't park their trucks with so many feet of the driveway?
Well, I can give you a solution here.
If that happens, what you should do is call nine-one-one, call the police department.
That's what we did.
But don't come out and move.
No, they did, they did. Diane DeChigas.
Well, it was just like that one time they were working on Sunday, and the neighbor stopped me at church, and we went and, you know, called the police department, and they came and shut them down.
That was on Sunday.
Yeah, we, I think what people don't realize, it's not that it's just aesthetically bad, and it's not that the property values do go down, I've talked to realtors, but the amount of work that goes on, I don't think people realize how often they're there, it's not just an electrical, it's all those AT&T and Verizon and everything else. And you can see the one vehicle, and that's, usually there's two or three, it's not a guy in a minivan with a, you know, a pad to look at, there's vehicles all the time, and I don't know what they do, but we did have a problem where they would come up during the evening, and they'd have the lights and the trucks going, and they'd be taking up space on the weekends, and that's all we did, we just, different neighbors would take turns calling, and the police were always very nice, they came up and moved them along, and they did stop that, I think, for a while, I think.
Last Sunday worked this way.
Yes, they, well, and we'll just keep calling again.
Diane, did you have, did you guys have problems with the original cell tower?
No, when we moved there, that, that stuff wasn't all there, it was fine, we were fine.
When the first one went up, is there, is there a lot of activity?
Yeah, it's been constant since then, Gary.
Yeah, that, it seems like the more they put up there, the more that they're constantly working.
Okay, so this isn't new just to this most recent installation?
No, and I think, I think what people have to know in the future, because there's only going to be more of these, and, and you're not completely powerless, I found that out, and if you're going to get together and talk about that, that's another day, but you aren't completely powerless. I think Peters township residents have to realize, it's a crowded area, and you have big equipment, a lot of big equipment, and you did have road damage that was done, and, and traffic gets disrupted. I mean, we're not, I know you get tired of seeing us and hearing about it, but it's a real pain though, you know what? And before you put this in someone else's backyard or side yard, maybe give them a warning or give them a chance. We didn't know any of this was going to happen until the one extra pole was brought in. And apparently, according to the people that have been doing the work, this was a two, over two years of planning. So we missed the boat, we, you know, we didn't, we let it, we just let our guard down, and the people that we've talked to are very happy to talk to you and try to work with you. And, and the workers, they'll even tell you, we, you know, we drive a long way, we don't want to be hassled by the police every time we're here. So you do have some power, and if you talk to them before in the planning stages, something can be done. Like I said, we weren't, we moved there that time, there was never a problem, it's just when everything extra goes up. And I don't know if you can tell, but that whole pole, that's just a whole other set of issues, and they're just going to keep adding. So for people in the future, just watch where you put them.
Excuse me, sorry.
No, that's fine.
Is there a way to reach out to Verizon and AT&T and see if they do have smaller vehicles, because this is highly, it's a population area, residential area, because I'm sure, you know, like these big trucks, where they go out to fields and stuff, they need those, but I wonder if they do have smaller vehicles that can service these towers that are in residential areas?
You know, Tom, I was just thinking too, we have that new one that's going up, I think in the area of the school, the high school, so we can't be having big trucks blocking bus routes and things like that, I mean, that could cause a hole.
And there's another tower, if you stand there and look across that way, there's another tower all by itself in a field, it would be so much easier to access for all this work that they have to do. So just, you know, plan ahead, and, and like I said, you're telling people they seem to be wanting to work with us.
Seth and I spoke on a few points, I'm sure that was fun for you. So I walked out today, she saw another Simmons Farm one, but looking the other way, there were two totally open towers that are still pretty high, and then I was hearing about how McMurray Road reception was pretty bad, Nick Sherman said he couldn't get service at the cigar store on nineteen and so forth. I'm just wondering how we can't interact with these folks and so disrupt their stamping needs when they come in and kind of direct them to other areas. The other thing Seth and I discussed was contracts had to be signed with Eddie and the Dimples at different times. I understand you're really restrained, Mr. Smith, by the whatever act it is with the utility towers. Do we have any ability to regulate the residential side of these contracts? Because I believe Seth, when it came in, it came in with a contract for each of the residents there?
Are you asking about West Penn itself?
No.
The contracts with the residents.
What we're being told is, there's not much, look, we're not going to get help for energy in West Penn, and anything they're going to talk to Paul about, it doesn't matter until West Penn says, we're going to approve potentially a political run and get rid of this obscenity. I'll hold my breath on that, but I keep getting told, can't do anything about West Penn, but can we do anything from our residential side when you see a contract showing up? Purchasing the right to do this on that land, is there anything we can do?
That's just a public utility?
A civil contract between those residents and the utility.
Yeah, I mean, because, because it's classified as utility, I don't think we can regulate it, even in a residential area.
So I have like a power line running through my front yard, can I interact with these folks and put up my own cell tower in my yard?
You'd have to be considered a public utility by the PUC, most likely.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything anybody wants on the next agenda? Seth, can you give us an update next time on where you are with trying to get that fence issue on TP drivers off?
Yeah, I was going to talk to you today. We haven't made much progress, so we're right up against a citation at this point, like, we're just, we've given them enough time and communication that we're just not getting the response that we want, and Alice, we'll reach out to them.
I'm sorry, what was it for?
The fence on TP. We spoke about this the last, it's just, we're not getting any progress on it.
So you can't get along with them?
We'll try again, but it's been, it's been difficult. I know you spoke to me last time about options, so we'll try it one more time, but we're right up against a citation on this one.
The owner lives out of state, right?
But he's supposed to be moving back.
Maybe he'll fix the fence.
He is, I think, in June.
All right, anybody got anything else for the good of the order? Do we have an executive session?
Sure.
All right, we're adjourned.